I usually just do one gavel, but we have such a large crowds and I thought two would be better. Thank you. Welcome everyone to the November 1st, 2022 Town Council of the Town of Southern Shores regular meeting. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. We'll just have a moment of silence now, please. Thank you. Counsel, I have a couple of amendments to our agenda tonight to propose. A change in the order of presentations, number four is going to go before number three. And add a resolution for council consideration in support of our Dare County Elections. That would be a motion that I need a second for.
Is that, or are we putting that up?
New business?
And the resolution would go under new business, yes. Thank you.
I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Counsel, on our consent agendas tonight, we have a couple of items, the approval of minutes and the surplus resolution. Any concerns, discussion, questions about the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And now we have our first presentation, introduction of our inter.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce to you for her official welcome to the Town of Southern Shores, our intern for this year, Ms. Zoe King. Zoe is a senior at First Flight High School. And next year she'll be moving on to college and she's going to have to choose between Wake Forest, Appalachian State, South Carolina, or Chapel Hill. Neither one of those four schools will be extremely fortunate to have her. In addition to excelling in the classroom, she's been a dancer here in Dare County for the last 15 years. She's a member of the chorus and she's a legitimate member of the chorus because she has an outstanding voice, beautiful singing voice. So far, among the things she's done for us, she's played a big role in assembling the 5,200 pounds of paper that we recently shredded. And moving forward, she's going to play a big role in helping us move from paper copies to digital copies. And that'll be a lot of scanning instead of shredding. She's going to assist the town clerk, i.e. mom, on this endeavor. And so we're very, very thankful to have Zoe and look forward to working with her for the next semester, year. Thank you. It's not a semester, a year.
Thank you, Cliff. Congratulations, Zoe. Thank you. That's wonderful. We need all the helping hands we can get. So our next presentation is in recognition of our responders to our tragedy that occurred on September 21st. I'm just going to read a couple of paragraphs. "On September 21st, 2022, at approximately 10:00 a.m., on a relatively calm and beautiful Outer Banks day, an unusual and unexpected and tragic event occurred just off our beach. The town contracts with Surf Rescue to provide lifesaving measures for our beach visitors, primarily ocean rescues for swimmers in distress. On this day, three of these ocean rescue lifeguards were called upon to rescue an individual who was able to free himself from an ultralight glider that crashed into the ocean about 3,000 feet from shore. Each one of the guards played a role in successfully bringing this individual safely back to the beach. After this rescue was completed, another challenge that day was finding someone who was able and willing to help with the recovery of the second individual, who was not able to free himself from the aircraft after it crashed. And sadly, this resulted in his death. We are extremely thankful for the two individuals who volunteered their time and expertise as divers for the difficult task of recovering the victim and returning him to his family. The Town of Southern Shores is appreciative of the support and mutual aid that it gets from the rest of the public safety agencies in and around Dare County. There was no exception for this event as many of those agencies responded, and the town is very grateful for all of their efforts. The town is also extremely grateful for and appreciative of all five of these individuals who went in the water that day to perform their duties." And if you don't mind, if all five of our distinguished public servants could join me up at the front.
Ma'am, you're too tall.
Our three surf rescue, ocean rescue lifeguards are Gloria, Topolich, Marshall Hess, and Erica Brech. Let's have a big round of applause. Sorry. Here we go. This is for you, Gloria. And you? Marshall, thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Eric, for all your efforts indeed. Thank you, sir, very much. Now, our two divers, let me read this real quick. "In recognition of your dedication and diligence and successful performance of an ocean rescue under unusual circumstances due to an ocean ultralight aircraft crash off the beach of Southern Shores on September 21st, 2022, the town thanks you for your services." Our two divers are Mr. Ma'am White and Mr. David Bakke. "And in recognition of your unselfishness and generosity and giving of your time and expertise as a diver while assisting in victim recovery as a result of an ocean ultralight aircraft crash off the beach in Southern Shores on September 21st, 2022, the town thanks you for your services very, very much." Let's have a big hand. Thank you very much. And now we're going to do some photographs, right? Photographs. Do you want the council members to come around?
Great.
Council members, join me, please. You will. Because you don't get to do this right now. So this is kind of...
I've got you all, but let's do a little fight now.
Okay.
There we go. I've got you all in there. Listen to the friend. There we go. That was scary. Big smiles. Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you, you guys.
That's so great.
Hello. Oopsie. Messing up the stuff here.
I became Ed Lawler.
So we'll move on to our staff reports. We'll start out with our deputy town manager, planning director Wes Haskett. Good evening, Wes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Council members. I have a report for y'all tonight for the month of October. There were a total of 48 permits issued that consisted of non-zoning permits, 21 building permits, four of those were for new construction, new homes, 15 trade permits, two sign permits, and one light disturbance stormwater management permit. The total amount of fees collected in October was $33,684.40. With respect to code enforcement in October, five warning citations were mailed for solid waste ordinance violations, and one warning citation was mailed for a lot coverage violation. Moving forward with the land use plan update, the community kickoff day with the consultant will be held on November 15th here in the Pitts Center. The day will consist of a joint planning board town council meeting at 10:00 a.m., a department head meeting at 11:30 a.m., a community tour at 1:45 p.m., and an open house here in the Pitts Center from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The public is invited to attend the open house to learn about the land use plan update project and to share thoughts and perspectives with the consultant. Lastly, with respect to the town planning board, they will hold their regular meeting on November 21st here in the Pitts Center at 5:00 p.m. The purpose of the meeting is for the board to consider VA-22-01, which is a variance application submitted by Timmons Group on behalf of Fire Service Real Estate Incorporated to seek relief from Town Code Section 36-171-1 at the property located at 28 East Alwood Trail. And of course, the board, they will be acting as the board of adjustment, that capacity for the variance consideration. And then they also may discuss potential commercial design standards. My last couple of reports I've given, you all have inquired about the status of what's going on in the marketplace. So currently, they are setting the structural steel columns for the entry into marshals. The roof structure for rack room is done and their current, or the roof decking is in place. So that part is done for rack room, but they're still setting the column for the entry into marshals. We still anticipate it to be complete in March or April. And the two sign permits that were issued this month, they were both issued for rack room and marshals. Any questions?
Sounds good. Thank you, Wes. Appreciate it so much.
You're welcome.
Our police chief, David Cole. Good evening, Chief Cole.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. The October 2022 police report, as you can see, we had under incidents, which were the crimes that were reported, we had 14 of those. That was a larceny, a fraud, vandalism, two of those. We had five that were drug-related, two drug equipment-related, one driving while intoxicated, one arrest warrant. We had three requests for the K-9, two of those were successful at finding drugs. One domestic, one assist other agency, and one regarding registration. We had five criminal arrests. A lot of that included the five drugs and the two drug equipment, as well as the DWI and the warrant. And we had under officers conducted 71 traffic stops. Out of that 71 traffic stops, they issued 13 written citations and another 41 warning citations. We had zero ordinance tickets issued. Not going to say we had zero ordinance violations, but we didn't have any tickets written.
Community resource officer.
Yeah, I learned that a long time ago. Motor vehicle accidents that were reportable, we had nine of those. And you can see our calls for service were 1,405 compared to 1,502 from last year. So we're down about 97. Just a couple of things worth noting. Friday, this Friday, the Kitty Hawk Elementary School Fall Festival, I believe it starts at 4-ish. We'll have all hands on deck, all hands that we have on deck. And we'll be out there participating along with, I believe the fire department's going to have an open house that same day, too. So we're looking forward to that. And also, our newest officer that's coming from Valdez, the western part of the state, will be starting November 17th, bless you. November 17th will be his first day, and we're still searching for two more. Any questions?
I've got one.
Yes, ma'am.
In your drug-related arrest, what were the, what types of drugs were we looking at?
Some of that was paraphernalia and some of it was, I don't have the exact what they were, but some of it was marijuana. It's amazing, for now, anyway. People come from Virginia and they think that it's legal here still, and it's not. And they're really shocked when we do end up arresting them. And a couple of the other ones were a little bit stronger drugs, but we're working those right now.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, the Fall Festival on Saturday is probably one of the better-attended public events here in town. It's that and the surf contest is the two big ones. So it should be a good time for everyone.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One was heroin, deputy chief, and our dog was...
Okay, okay. Thank you. Chief Limbacher. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Mayor. So for the month of October, the fire department responded to a total of 62 calls. And it is 34 EMS calls, one motor vehicle with injury, one without, one search for a person on land, one extrication, which basically amounted to a dog trapped in an elevator shaft, which he was not injured, so that was good. We got him out, but... One carbon monoxide incident, one arcing or short wire, six service calls, which is basically our wheelchair program, the signs, battery program, things like that. Assistant police or governmental agency four, which basically was a result of the Fire and Marins Point, assistant of Fire Marshal's Office there. One smoke scare odor of smoke, and then five alarms. One authorized burning also. They just didn't have a permit, but they obtained a permit for the next time they did it, so all cooperative. And that puts us exactly one call behind last year, so pretty much right on track with everything. Anybody questions on the report?
Not on the report, but you're having an open house.
We are. We have an open house on Friday. Always mimics the school Fall Festival just because we get a better turnout. And it's really, the mayor's right, it's really a pretty good event in town and drags a lot of people into one place. And I think it'll be very good. I think there's, you know, moving it to Friday night, I think, is better because the kids have their free day for soccer on Saturday and things like that, activities they're doing. So I think the kids like it a lot better, too. So I think it'll be very, very nice.
Were you having any classes like you did?
There is going to be fire extinguisher class every hour. You have to sign up the front table. Matt will be teaching, our deputy chief will be teaching out back. They'll have the little houses where they blow down the windows with the pretend fire for the little kids, for the hose and things like that. There will be no smokehouse this year. It's in disrepair. They'd get some repairs done this year, so it'll be back next year. But certainly, love everyone to come down and see it. If you haven't been there before, I think most of everybody has, but it'll be a good time. That starts at 4:00 and I think it ends at 8:00, right, chief? So.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Our town manager, Mr. Cliff Augberg. Good evening, Cliff.
Thank you. So just an update on beach nourishment as of, right, a little bit earlier. Presently, the Magdalen is working at the northern end of town, working from north to south, from Trout Run to about Blue, to Blue Thin. And the B.E. Lynn Home is working the southern end from about 60 Ocean Boulevard to 86 Ocean Boulevard. The idea is that the Magdalen is going to keep pumping south until it reaches a point that the B. Lynn Home can reach. So the Magdalen won't leave until it's at least pumped that far. And that should be somewhere about the 120 block of Ocean Boulevard. And once that's done, the Magdalen will move on probably around November 7th or November 8th of next week and start the project in Duck. At our last meeting, biweekly meeting, we shared that they thought the project could finish at about the same time. But if the Duck project finishes ahead of ours, then the Magdalen will come back to finish out that project. Those meetings that we've had are now going to move to Duck. So the next one will be November 9th, again, every two weeks, same time, 11:00. 11 o'clock for the agencies and 1:30 for the public. And they've been stuck in these two locations for a while, and it's starting to drive some people that live in that area nuts longer than they would typically have to acknowledge the bells. And it's because they'll start, you know, the last couple of weeks, they've left and come back. So hopefully, they get moving and give some folks some relief.
Cliff, I read the, they're staging all, for the Duck project, all the equipment is staged in Southern Shores?
Yes. Duck was unable to secure an access point from any of their oceanfront owners, so...
Do we get paid for that?
We do not.
Or we just being good neighbors?
It actually adds time to the project. Obviously, the further they are away. I mean, if they have to demobilize from, you know, they're two miles, the project starts two miles from the northern end of town, they've got to bring all that stuff back to Southern Shores to get it off the beach. That's part of the reason I think they're going up there earlier is so they can, they don't want to get stuck in Duck, is the saying goes.
Not to mention the roads.
Just ballpark, if we, if you say Trout Run south is done, what percentage of the whole project at that point for Southern Shores would be done?
It's pretty well divided up into thirds, but if you look, if you look at the, each one of that, or the sublines as a third, and it can divide up even more from that. If they, when they pump to the southern end, you know, that's done, and they pump to the northern end, that's done. So I would say, you know, when they, the two, those two sublines have gone north and south, it'll be about two-thirds of the way, the way through. And they're still telling us right now about the second week of December, they should be finished. And, you know, they're under two months now to get this project done. One of the two things I wanted to mention, on November 17th, staff will be meeting to go over the RFQs for the culvert that, those RFQs are due Friday. And so we'll review those and go over those on the 17th in hopes of getting a recommendation to you at your December meeting. And also, at that same time, we'll start the process. If things go well and the town gets awarded the tourist bureau grant, we'll need to start working on the path from this triangle up to East Alwood. So that, that'll be happening week after next.
Just kind of, the tourist bureau has actually approved the grant, but because it's coming from the restricted fund, the board of commissioners have to approve it. So it's in their box right now.
Yeah, I read, I read somewhere, I think it was 150,000?
150, yeah.
Has been approved by the tourism board.
That's correct.
Now it must be approved by the board of commissioners.
Yes. There were eight, there were eight total grants for a little over $908,000.
And do we know if it's on their agenda for next week?
Should be.
Yeah, I would think so. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cliff. We have an opportunity for a report from our town attorney, represented by Johnny. Hello this evening. Good evening, Johnny.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I have nothing to report unless there are any questions outside of what's going to be discussed in closed session.
Any questions for Johnny?
Is there any update on the oral arguments in the Fourth Circuit?
For which case?
For the Mid-Currituck Bridge.
Mid-Currituck Bridge.
Not to my knowledge. I have not heard of any updates.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it. It's now time for general public comment. I don't know if anyone signed up, but...
There's two, so I haven't said.
Second one. Okay, probably after your presentation. Yeah, okay. But if you want to speak twice, now's your opportunity.
Remember, hold your peace.
Okay, we'll move on. Our first item under, excuse me, we have no old business, correct? So the first item under new business is consideration of a resolution. This resolution was generated by Dare County, and it's in support of election staff and precinct workers. And I believe the council, each of us have read and reviewed this. And I'm hoping to get a motion to approve this resolution.
I move that we approve the resolution showing appreciation and support for the Dare County election staff and precinct workers.
I'll second that.
Very good. Any discussion or anything? Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, five to zero. Thank you all very much. Now, on the, under new business, we have the e-bikes educational presentation by Chief Cole, I believe. And it's in page 14 of our books, council.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just to give you a little bit of background, I was asked to come up with an educational presentation regarding e-bikes and some possibilities as far as ordinances. I reached out to the Chiefs Association probably about a month or so ago. I received one reply, and that was from Bald Head Mountain, or Bald Head Island. Didn't receive any other ones. I did, I did get some information from Kill Double Hills and some of the local departments on here. The problem with the one I got from Bald Head is they don't have any sidewalks, so that really didn't help me an awful lot, so... One of the other things that I wanted to pass on is recent research. There's, they're selling about 1.5 million electric bikes every year. They've become very popular. They started becoming fairly popular in the early 2000s. Part of the problem you have is, and I've got some documentation that I'll show you here shortly, I believe there's, there's about 20 states that they don't have anything on the books right now to even deal with, let alone define and regulate the e-bikes. There's about 30 states that do. Ours has some that you're going to see up here. But what they're pushing for in the federal, the federal transportation is pushing for is to try and come up with a classification, class one, class two, and a class three. I'll be handing out some information out as well. But one of the things that they didn't take into consideration, and the federal regulators had noticed this, is that just about all of the ordinances, all of the states... had noticed this, is that just about all of the ordinances, all of the states' proposals say that you can't have an e-bike with 750 watts, which is one horsepower, on a level ground. The federal statute even goes to the extent that it says, and you weigh 170 pounds, and that bike is just operating on the motor, it can go no faster than 20 miles an hour. But the problem is, and the federal regulators also noted this, is they don't take into consideration that if you're using pedal power as well as the motor, those bikes can go a lot faster, 28 to 30 miles an hour in some cases. So they're still working on a lot of the glitches. Some states are still trying to identify some of the information on that. First thing I do is, is give you the definition, it is in our North Carolina general statute 240-4.01, 7A, and that's an electric assisted bicycle. And this is going to get confusing, so just follow along with me. They couldn't make this simple, trust me. A bicycle with two or three wheels that is equipped with a seat or saddle for use by the rider, fully operable, pedals for human propulsion, and an electric motor of no more than 750 watts, which like I said, that's a one horsepower, whose maximum speed on a level surface when powered solely by the motor is no greater than 20 miles an hour. Gets better. Rules of the road apply to e-bikes, same as a bicycle. So they have to follow the same rules as a regular bicycle. And if you delve into it even farther, it does say that they're allowed to go where a regular bicycle goes. However, towns can make local ordinances to say different. The only difference with this is the operator must be at least 16 years of age or older to operate an e-bike. Still don't have to wear a helmet, don't have to register it, don't have to have insurance, but you've got to be at least 16 years old. Next definition, under the same section, 20-4.01, 27I, this is a motor-driven bicycle. It's a vehicle with two or three wheels, steering handle, one or two saddle seats, a pedal, a motor that cannot propel the vehicle at a speed greater than 20 miles an hour on a level surface. This term shall not include an electric assisted bike as defined in 7A. Third definition, this is 27J, this is a moped. And that's pretty much a vehicle that, other than a motor-driven or an electric assisted bicycle that has two or three wheels, no external shifting device, a motor that does not exceed 50 cc's, pistons displacement, and cannot propel the vehicle at a speed greater than 30 miles per hour on a level surface. The motor may be either powered by electricity, alternative fuel, motor fuel, or a combination This is just a quick breakdown, and I know this is very hard to read, but it was pretty hard to copy this from, from the state website, but this just gives you a breakdown of some of the do's and don'ts. This was by a bicycle association out of the state of North Carolina, and this just breaks down some of the do's and don'ts, and what's allowed in some of the bigger cities compared to some of the more rural places. Again, this is just a proposed ordinance, it's not, it's just something I was asked to do. I'm not against bikes. I like mountain bikes. I don't ride electric bikes. I like the real bike, that's the whole idea, but. Section 2012 would be the new section, and it would be the use of electric assisted bicycles, e-bikes, on town sidewalks and multi-use paths. And this is roughly, this is the definition, this is the state definition that would be added. It's nothing that we've come up with. And it would pretty basically say, no person operating an electric assisted bicycle should go or ride upon any town sidewalk or multi-use path except to cross at a designated crosswalk or at a street. That's just something that we came up with, we used that, and we took examples from a couple of the other towns. We have had some, some issues, we've had some complaints, not a lot, but we've had some issues with some of these electric bikes. And again, a lot of them are going a lot faster than 20 miles an hour on a sidewalk. And we also know, part of the problem with the town is our sidewalks are not that wide. A lot of the bigger cities, they've got right-ofways and pathways that are 10 feet. So there's a lot of difference between that and a four or five foot that we have here. We've had issues with some of our public works employees nearly being hit by somebody while they're trying to clean up the longest sides of the sidewalks, for example, on South Dogwood. So we have had some complaints. The main thing, the main purpose of this is, is to educate you and to give you some ideas on, on how we can enforce it, if and when you decide to. And then as far as driving on the beach. This is just the revised ordinance that's already there. If you look at the old ordinance, which I believe is, is almost towards the end, it's very vague, a lot of it makes no sense at all, and what I've done is, is I've added e-bike, because that's what I was asked to do. I'll be honest and tell you, I've been here 15, 16 years, I've had, I've seen maybe two bikes, one or two, on the beach, and that's it. But what I did change, and a lot of this is mirrored Kill Devil Hills, we didn't have a lot of these other things listed up here, and I felt that if we're going to, if we're going to change it, then we need to try and address as much as we can that's not going to be allowed on the beaches. And it's pretty much self-explanatory, it shall be unlawful for any person to operate any vehicle of any type, including but not limited to a motor vehicle, pickup truck, airplane, helicopter, beach buggy, jeep, motorcycle, bicycle, e-bicycle, any one, two, three, or four-wheel vehicles that are powered by any type of motor or physically propelled on the ocean beach areas within the town of Southern Shores. And that's pretty much what Kill Devil Hills has got, so I kind of took parts of that and parts of next. I'm going to, I tried to find statistics on injuries and accidents, and they have nothing on electric bikes right now, zero. Whether or not they're tracking it, I don't think they are, because even on our accident reports, I don't believe that there's a place where you can put electric bike. So there really weren't any stats for that. What I did do is, for the bicycle injuries, for 2015 through 2019, I will hand this out to you, but what I can tell you is there were 4,711 accidents regarding bikes in that, those years, total years. And there was about 107 of those that resulted in a fatality to the bicyclist. That was over a five-year period.
Is that number nationwide, or?
That's, that's just North Carolina.
Just North Carolina.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there was one last night in Kill Devil Hills.
Yep.
Yeah.
We've had a couple. Kitty Hawk had one right in front of Guy C Lee. That was a foreign exchange student, she was on an electric bike, it was one with a throttle. She was in attorney lane and for some reason just panicked and hit the throttle and went right into the, head-on into a Toyota Tacoma and killed her.
The throttles do stick.
These are, these, what I'm handing out is the federal regulations. And that also breaks down the states that do and do not have anything on the books in the book. 21 of them don't. And this is just a breakdown of the injuries for, mark her one, for bicycle. And the state also advised that either these numbers are not completely accurate, because apparently in 2016, they changed the way they recorded injuries. So they may not have a 100% accuracy. That's all I got.
Chief, is this People for Bikes, is that a nonprofit organization?
It is, and I researched that, and she's actually determined, and up in Rowland, they've got a big, big following. And they've done a lot to try and get some of these things on the books, as far as trying to regulate and do the right thing. This is just a non-legal.
These are federal regulations, or is?
Yes. And that's kind of what a lot of the states is kind of doing.
They saw, they saw a lot more bikes that had more than 750 watts.
Oh, absolutely. It's like anything that, that's new, the new bells and whistles. Government just can't keep up. There's just no way.
Enforcement.
Yeah. Again, I want to clarify too, as far as the multi-use pass on that, I don't feel that that includes the ones on the state, Duck Road, the one out here, those are state right-ofways. What I'm, what I am talking about is, is the sidewalks that are within the town. You got, and I've seen some of them, a couple of people told me there's some parked at some of the, at the schools, there's no way some of those, the elementary schools, those kids are 16 years old. But my concern is, we're just trying to be cautious, that's all. You get a bicycle that can do 28 miles an hour on a sidewalk, and they meet up with a little kid, a little child, or a mother in a stroller, that's just a bad thing waiting to happen. One of the concerns all of the chiefs here on the beach have is that the state can't even keep up with it, so we're trying to at least get a handle on, as I said, Kill Devil Hills has had two or three fatalities. And there's not an awful lot out there that we can, can really work with as far as any kind of ordinances or anything like that, other than what we can do locally for right now. The state just can't keep up with it. And I don't know if they want to keep up with it. I mean, you saw there was three different definitions, the three different, you know, to me, where I came from, mopeds, first of all, you had to have a license or at least a learner's permit, and they were already classified A, B, and C. You can't ride them on any road with a speed limit's over 45 miles an hour. Here, you don't, it don't matter. You just put a helmet on and you're gone. Back where I came from, they had to be registered, they had to be insured, and you had to have a license. So I'm not surprised that they haven't caught up with the e-bike yet. Any questions, comments?
Where are the towns, they've got an ordinance on the books, what kind of penalty are they charging people when they, or do you know? What's the consequences?
Depends on how you write the ordinance, I guess. You know, it would ultimately be a civil, civil fine of some sort.
Yeah, I can't imagine your office would check in the wattage on the bike.
Yeah, and they're not going to, trust me, they're not going to.
There's so many improprieties here.
Yeah.
Go along with, that go along with this. And the push for green is what a lot of this is on, and you're going to see more people who are on the drive of an e-bike to work, and that's what some of those kids are doing that got killed, you know, instead of pedaling. That's what they do. And if you have a multi-speed bike with 10 gears, and you put it in the 10th gear on full power, you can get well over 35.
Oh, yeah. I found some research where there's, the new bikes out here now, yeah, you can push 35, 36 miles an hour. That's nuts.
It's, yeah, a little scary.
Yeah, and again, on a road, not a problem. On a sidewalk?
Yeah.
On a, on a, on our sidewalks. My only concern is, is, and I get the bikes and the e-bikes, I don't have any issue with that. My concern is, is that our roads are barely wide enough, we know that our sidewalks definitely aren't wide enough, and then you put a, you put a bike, an electric bike, that can, can travel at 28 miles an hour possibly. Yeah.
It's not only kids and children, walkers can get.
Well, that's right. Walkers, people backing out of their driveways, those types of things. Yeah, there's a lot of things to think about, so.
So if, if the town was to adopt some, some new ordinances addressing e-bikes, a couple clarifications. Number one, you said it would not apply to the multi-use path on NC 12.
No.
This one out here.
That's correct.
And then?
Nor this path right, right along here, the sidewalk.
Or on 158.
That's correct.
Would it apply on the CPOA multi-use path within the town limits?
That's something we'd have to, we'd have to look into.
The way this is written, it would apply to the DOT multi-use path.
Right, as long as they're, if, if they're town multi-use pass technically, or town sidewalks, then yes, that would apply.
I think their signs say no motorized vehicles. Now, is this considered, we got a motor, electric motor vehicle?
According to state law, no.
You saw the definitions.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, trying to, because that's going to be a point of contention to think somewhere.
Right. My, my, my only comment would be that, that I'd rather have mine on the multi-use pass on Duck Road than in the traffic. Same thing out here. But there's no reason why they can't ride them in the road in the neighborhoods throughout the town. I know South Dogwood's a tough one, but.
Well, I can say that my wife will, will not ride her bike on that South Dogwood road. She'd much prefer to be on the walkway with her e-bike. And her e-bike has an automatic throttle, it will not exceed 20 mile per hour, so. The South Dogwood path is sort of self-regulating, because you can't go fast on it or you'll wreck yourself.
Yeah, you got a few curves in there.
It's a nice new sidewalk there.
And your wife has one of the new ones, and that's what, they're trying to get all the states to come up with a class one, two, and three.
That, see, the breakdown in your handout, the People for Bikes three-class system, I mean, it has the one and twos, which are fairly equivalent to a bicycle, just has assistance, pedal assist, it's when you get to the 30 mile an hour, some of the unregulated ones. I mean, a 750-watt motor will push Elizabeth 50 miles an hour. It's the speed control that blocks it out at 20.
And if they're classified as a class one or two, then they have to have that, it's like a governor on there so that they can't go over that 20 miles an hour, but the state hasn't put that into any kind of a.
I've tried to get mine over 20 going down East Dogwood, and even down that slope, I can't. I mean, a full throttle down, if the motor kicks out and even pedaling, I can't really break 22, 23, so. I think all those bikes, it's a non-issue. And I like how People Bauer has it, says these, these class one and two electric bicycles will be permitted to travel anywhere traditional bikes are permitted. And since we don't have this three-class breakdown yet, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I don't want to jump ahead of the horse.
And I have to admit, I know nothing about e-bikes at all, but does it make a difference if someone is just pedaling or engaging the e-bike function?
Most e-bikes have like settings, so like on your one setting, 90% of the power's coming from the human. Your five setting, maybe 70% of the power's coming from the bike. And, and then some of them have an equipped grip throttle where you don't have to pedal at all. But, I mean, the benefit of the e-bikes is I see more people getting out on their bikes that otherwise wouldn't. Or, for instance, mobility on a Saturday, when there's a ton of traffic, and you're trying to get all your beach gear to the beach. So, I mean, I, I would rather not force some of those people onto the road, anywhere in town. Now, if you got 28-mile-an-hour bike, that's a different animal. I haven't seen many of those. I know there were some being sold locally. I'm not sure if they still are.
I have one.
You're not supposed to have, it's legal.
It's a Saunders, they're out of California where it's legal. Yeah.
Let me go to the NC general statute.
Yeah, they do move.
Yeah, well...
This is, this is a Pandora's box, is what it is.
Yeah, I just, uh...
There's no easy...
I did some, yeah, I found a company called, they're Juice Bikes. And they can run up to 28, and they have a, they have a racetrack mode.
Yep.
But they do have class one, class two, class three, as they...
But that is not an electric-assisted bicycle in the state of North Carolina.
Well, I understand that, but here's...
I'm fine with an electric-assisted bicycle in the state of North Carolina going anywhere in town.
Somebody from North Carolina could go out and buy one of these and bring it home.
Sure, they'll ship them to you.
You know what else they can do to the motor vehicle?
And then, then who's, you know, to enforce, then how, how's the, what's the enforcement mechanism going to be?
So...
I think it's self-enforcement.
That was my second question, chief. Can you, can you speak to, if we were to adopt some sort of ordinance as it relates to e-bikes? How do you see the enforcement taking place?
Complaint-driven.
Okay.
You know, we, like I say, we haven't had a lot. I'm not here to take everybody's rights away. I was asked to do this, though.
Right.
I love bikes, but I like the real bikes, sorry. It would be complaint-driven.
Okay.
We've had issues, again, Public Works guys, they've almost been run over two or three times. And it's, you know, it's, it's the younger operators.
Yeah. They don't stop for the bike stops.
No, well, neither do your professional bikers either.
No, they don't either.
Yeah, not, not, no biker does.
Yeah.
But you read, read the general statute, and they have, the same rules apply to limited motor vehicles.
Right.
Period.
Just, just one...
Well, listen to this going down a little bit of the same road we did with LSVs.
We're not there yet. Give it a little bit more time.
I think, you know, I said, we're going down that same road.
Yeah, but they're...
It's just a different vehicle.
They're regulated.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they finally, they, you know, registered, insured, all those things, yeah.
Just one comment I had, you mentioned rewriting section 20-109, and you provided us with the, I guess, this is, yeah, that definitely is nonsensical. I mean, it's, I don't even know how you read through it. So I think revising that is good. I guess personally, you know, I live on the oceanfront. I probably haven't seen five bikes on the ocean, because our beaches are just not very good for beach biking. But it seems a little draconian to ban bicycles from the beach. I don't know.
In the current...
No argument from me.
Automobiles, motorcycles, and beach buggies.
But the proposal says jeep, motorcycle, bicycle.
Yep.
Bicycle and e-bike.
I used to know somebody who'd bike on the beach every morning when fat tires first came out, like their super CrossFit exercise.
Sure, there are people that can do that.
I wouldn't want to preclude them from that. I'd be maybe willing to entertain hours of operation, but that's probably...
He biked on the hard sand, too.
No, he went in the soft sand.
Yeah, well, we're going to have a better beach, so I don't know.
Well, we're going to have a totally different beach by the time December gets here, we hope. So that, that could change things, too.
Need to say golf cart, right here.
Um, I agree with Paula that the current ordinance is something that's crying out for modernization and improvement. I wonder if this is a topic we could include in the land use plan update public discussions. Is that worth, is it worth getting out, getting out in the community and getting more people's input?
I mean, I, I think we need to know how the community feels about this, what the complaints are, and then lots of people have e-bikes, use them, I mean, all these vehicles present some kind of risk. You know, my husband and I had a terrible bike accident long ago, and both ended up in the hospital for a week, and we weren't speeding 20 miles an hour, I assure you. I mean, there's an element of risk to this, and I just think we need to see how people in the community feel about it, one way or the other. So maybe that's a good way to get some feedback.
Any other questions for Chief Cole? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for all this hard work.
Thank you for, for making this presentation, giving us all this material to, to work with. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I possibly, I think maybe a little bit of small task force to study this, or that, could be in order, just to get the feeling of some of the community to, I mean, is out there, some folks care less, and some, you know, until one goes by. But definitely on the sidewalks, I know I've seen them on Trinity and on Juniper. I mean, people get out, get out of the way when they see a bike come down the sidewalk, even a bicycle.
Right.
If they're walking, they get, they get out of the way, so.
Yeah, because that, that, Juniper, that's not a wide, not a wide...
No, it's a narrow, it's narrow.
I think there's probably different ways to handle it than outright ban.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Can you just roll this over?
And I would look at a mobility thing, like Elizabeth said, the land use plan. I mean, I think low-speed vehicle, I mean, across the, the means and methods of traversing our town, both pedestrian, vehicle-operated, other than straight DOT stuff, is something that I think would be appropriate to look at, on how we want to develop in the future with these new technologies.
I mean, it's, it's going to grow. I mean, the guy across the bridge is selling them like crazy.
Yeah, he had an open house there this past weekend.
They're going, he can't get them fast enough. And, I mean, it's, it's, it's easy mobility, and, you know, with the price of gasoline, where it is, some people are turning to that to go to work. And it's not just the young people either.
Right.
They don't in February.
No.
I mean, it's like, when mopeds first started hitting the beach, I mean, like, oh, they're going to start... I mean, you ever seen somebody cruising on the beach right in February on a moped? They're there, they're on that moped for a reason, not because they prefer it for gas or something.
So to wrap this up and move on to the next item on the agenda, we're going to direct staff to ask for this to be included in the land use plan update discussions.
Why not?
And then we'll, we'll think about it some more, get some more public input. I think we have some folks here that want to give some public input here in a few minutes, and perhaps take this up at a later meeting.
I think we need more.
Do you need a motion to do that?
Do we need a motion, or is that enough for now?
Consensus.
Okay, consensus, okay, very good. Thank you. Next on our agenda is, Cliff is going to talk to us about an amendment to the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department contract to accommodate the new building at East Dogwood and NC 12.
Thank you. The, the explanation of this is more complicated than the issue, really, truly. But it, it comes down to this, that, as you know, Dare County is on a strong capital improvement plan to upgrade their emergency management services stations. And one of those stations is at 28 East Dogwood. It's the station, it's owned by Fire Real Estate Services. All the property for the fire department is owned by Fire Real Estate Services and operated by the fire department. There's, there's a contract that the town has with the fire department to provide fire services, goes way back, but the most recent one we're working on really is from 2009. It was amended in 2019, and it's 10-year, 2029, it'll be amended again. In, in that contract, there, there are two parts that we're asking you all to take a look at. Section nine, and I'm, I'm off of, well, section nine, I think you'll find in the, in the new, you'll find it in the present contract, you won't find it in the new one. But what section nine reads is, at, at the time, the 2019 amendment contract was going on, the fire department was being contemplated. And there were three provisions under section nine that if the fire department were to come to fruition, then these things would kick in. A and B were reciprocal easements. There was easement given from the town to the fire department, so they could have the lot coverage for parking and open space. The town in return could use that. And then, because the town gave up some space to the Public Works Department, the fire department returned that and gave the Public Works Department space at the EMS station. But when, when we started talking about how this building's going to be renovated, it's going to house, the new building on East Dogwood is going to house, brand-new building, it's going to, you know, demo what's there, and put a brand-new building in. It's going to house EMS, and the fire department will have a space in there. It didn't make a whole lot of sense for Public Works to be a part of that equation. So we're, we're asking you all to amend it first by striking all of section nine. None of it really applies to this anymore. Dare County has committed to finding us public works space somewhere. And right now, we think that's going to end up being behind the back ball field at Kitty Hawk Elementary School. There'll be a shed, stick built, or I don't think the state line makes one big enough, but there'll be a shed to make up for that loss. That's the first thing. The second thing, it's just a little more complicated, because the fire department has a mortgage. And, you know, if you go all the way to the end to section 39, it'll really tell you, I mean, section 31, it'll really tell you why we're here. Section 31 on page, page 81 says lender approvals. Fire department and Fire Real Estate represent and warrant to the town that they're entering into and executing this contract does not constitute an event of default on any loans held by its lenders. So, so that's really why we're here, to talk about number 10, because the fire department has a mortgage on the new building. Part of the assets are the East Dogwood station, the contract wouldn't allow them to tear that down. But as we've amended 10, now it will. 10 adds a few, few letters to it. 10 is entitled additional property rights, obligations, and covenants. A under 10 is new, and it takes into account that it accounts for the new lease, and that the fire department can lease that facility for EMS purposes. It also allows in the future for the town to have any say-so, and what happens in that, any of those decisions in the future. Item B allows the town to approve any use. I mean, obviously, if it's a change, if it's a building impairment, if it's a zoning impairment, then we'd have that say-so, but the intent is to keep EMS there as long as we possibly can. And so we want to have a say if, if there's negotiations there. The next ones, C and D, were A and B, but they're just relettered. E addresses the covenant not to demolish this. If you approve this, they can tear down the East Dogwood station, they can't tear down anything else. The lender asked us to include F, which acknowledges the mortgage. And again, G is, is, addresses the use covenant and what the building can be used for. So you can see why it's confusing. But the long and short of it is, in order for the, this project to move forward, we're asking you to remove section nine and to include the amendments in 10. We think it'll be a better contract moving forward. And Chief, anything else?
Has town council looked at this?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Robert Hobbs actually, because of 31, that's when we got the lenders, I mean, the lawyers involved. And so both our town attorney, Robert Hobbs, and the attorney for the bank and the fire department have approved. Both sides got what they needed.
Okay.
So we get this, and we don't have to pay anything?
That's right. Yeah, and, and it's...
If they, if they leave, if Southern Shores Fire Department, they're not going to.
And I guess, you know, some people may think, okay, what, what does this have to do with the town? But the way the contract's written, and we hope this will never happen, but in order for the town to continue to provide fire services, if the, if something were to happen and, and the fire department couldn't continue to do this, those assets would revert back to the town so that we can continue. And that's why we're here today.
Does Dare County have any EMS station in Duck, you know?
Are they stationed in Duck? They don't have a station.
No, they are not.
So Dogwood is the farthest north they have in the county, isn't it? Okay, all right.
That's why they want to do what they're doing.
That's why they want to do this, yeah. Okay.
Any other questions for Cliff concerning this agenda item, counsel?
Does any of this have to be reviewed with the county, or just...
No, the fire department, once you approve this, the fire department will enter into a separate lease with Dare County for the use of the EMS building, to cover the maintenance and the legalities of that use.
There's a separate ground lease that Tracy Stravas, I thought, is the coffee line, and they're in the process, Dustin Fields forward to block the out, and they're in the process for you. That's a separate and additional to this contract.
Getting complicated.
The fire department will, along with the county, will approve the final plan and everything?
Well, the...
They're, they're included in the whole nine yards.
You, you all will see the, you'll approve the, the new building.
Ah, all right.
And planning director shared with you all the variance that's coming, so that they can address the, to get started.
So go to the planning board then, first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any.
So counsel, we need a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into the amended and restated fire services contract between the town and the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department and Fire Service Real Estate, and to enter the associated memorandum of contract for recording at the Dare County Register of Deeds. Second, and a second. Any other discussion at this time before we vote? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, who's put all the work into getting to where we are now. We're getting closer. Thank you. General public comment. Debbie Newberry. Come on up.
Hi, I wanted to just make a few brief comments on the e-bike. I wanted to start with that my husband and I are really interested in this area, because we've recently bought e-trikes, and which actually are great, because you don't fall off of them like you do a bike. And so we like that quite a bit. But there was a few things that I just wanted to kind of point out as we went forward here. There's really three types of e-bikes, as the police chief had said. The type one, which is really important, a good deal of the e-bikes, at least ours are, is they can go with a speed, with assist, up to 20 miles per hour. But you have to pedal, and trust me, you have to pedal hard. You get a lot of exercise with this. This is not sitting and revving it up and going. The type two, it's the same, can go up to 20 miles per hour, but you do have a throttle assist, so you can throttle it up, and it actually can go by itself, but it can't go more than 20 miles per hour. And that's with assist. If you're going down a hill, all of these could go faster, you know, depending on your heel and the quality of the bike. And then the type three, that's the one you were talking about. That guy can go anywhere, they can get up to speeds, God knows what. And so they really kind of fall out of that category. And my biggest concern is we might, we're, we're really lumping all these together. And I think, you know, I would hope that everybody looks at this and looks at the big picture. And if we're going to do something, let's make sure that we're not lumping all these together, because it, it, I think it hurts quite a bit. And one of the reasons is for seniors, especially. These e-bikes are really important for seniors, because they can get out, they can actually get some exercise, and they can bike, something that they haven't been able to do for a while because of the hills. Realize we don't have a lot here, but for me to get anywhere, it's up a hill. And so you're just not going, and you're not going very far. But with this, you can get up there, you can bike, and believe it or not, the studies have shown that you will get 75% of the exercise going the same distance as a regular biker would go with these types of bikes. But the issue here is, or not the issue, but the positive item is, you'll go a lot further. So in the long run, you're getting just as much, if not more, exercise. We can both attest to this, we have lost 20 pounds in the last month and a half, each one of us separately. So it has worked. The other thing is, it gets these seniors out, so they can be more social. The other thing is, it gets these seniors out so they can be more social. They can get out, they can be with friends, they can do a lot of different things. So I really do want to keep that in mind. We don't want people out on the roads. And so, you know, some of my recommendations would be to be very careful on what we choose to do here. But there's some other things that can be done. If you're concerned about people speeding, put a speed limit down. And trust me, I've gone through the little signs, and it tells me how fast I'm going, even when I'm on the sidewalk. So, thank you.
Where do you ride?
I ride, well, we ride up to Corolla quite a bit, believe it or not. And, well, we don't get the whole way, we only get to Pine Island because you can stay on the paths to do that. But we'll, we ride all around here, we use the multi-use paths constantly, we go on the other side of the highway, we stay on paths, we're not, we are not, we're not road people.
Do you use the Kitty Hawk Pass, Kitty Hawk Road?
You know, I have, we haven't been down there yet, mostly because it's so hard to get to. But we wear really bright colors, we're the obnoxious people that, people over five years old should not wear the colors we wear when we're on the bikes, but that's okay.
Thanks, Stacey.
Thank you.
Mr. Ferretti? I hope I'm not, no, I think I killed your name.
No, you're good.
Okay, no, I got it, okay.
Hi, Bill Ferretti, I live at 296 Wax Myrtle. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I appreciated the chief's presentation, how he laid it out, and specifically the separated out the multi-use path on 12 and 158. I want to add something to his presentation as part of the discussion. The e-bikes and bikes are included in the vehicle definition in North Carolina, but when you look at the motor vehicle definition, e-bikes and mopeds are excluded. So you notice the signs that you see on the state multi-use pass where it says no motor vehicles, doesn't include mopeds and e-bikes. They're already excluded, they're already, they're allowed. But they're just, e-bikes, mopeds, whatever you want to call them, tomorrow there'll be a new name, throw in all the electric scooters. Transportation, green transportation is everywhere. And in an ideal situation, we'd have what, I was recently in Europe and in a small town in France, and there's three travel lanes, one for vehicles, one for pedestrians, and one for bikes. And that'd be ideal, but that's not, unfortunately, that's not our case here. The other thing that I would point out is, we have multiple types of sidewalks/paths. We have granite sidewalk, traditional sidewalks that run along dogwood that, you know, keep people, pedestrians from walking in a very busy road. We have the big multi-use pass, but then we also have the connector pass, you know, that connect in the, between Chickahawke and the northern part of the town. And the connector pass that take you from the neighborhood directly to the beach. And so paths take on many different forms. Today, I happen to be on some of those, riding on the streets, riding on some of those sidewalks, and we are with a mixed group. Some of us were riding regular bikes, some of us riding e-bikes. And again, e-bikes take many forms. You know, you could pedal only, you can do pedal assist, or you can just, as you said, push that throttle and go. The one advantage I would say that an e-bike has over an e-scooter is e-bikes have brakes. You can actually have a little bit more control. And I would, I agree with what was previously said, you know, this is really opening up biking to a larger segment of the population, and I think we have to be very careful in really sending the wrong message, that that's not what we want. But I fully support the idea of looking at it from a different approach, like a speed limit approach. So it doesn't matter what type of different motorized, non-motorized, whatever it is, set a speed limit on some of the smaller sidewalks, and that would be very applicable. And something that we already know how to enforce, by the way, because speed enforcement is speed enforcement. And then lastly, I just want to speak to the beach ordinance. While I can see why it needs to be rewritten, I really don't see the use case, the harm that bikes and e-bikes would be causing on the beach, specific, especially pedal bikes. There are very few of them, and I just don't, I don't see that that's really needed at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Fred? You didn't sign up. Do you want to talk?
No, I don't think she's heard of him.
Okay.
I heard of him.
You're welcome. All right, we're going to have a few minutes to have our council comments, and then I'm going to call for a brief recess before we go into a closed, or make a motion to go into a closed session. Actually, we'll probably do that at the same time. Okay, council business. I'll go first. Our next meeting is December, I should know this.
December 1st.
The next meeting?
Okay, the next joint meeting is November 15th, and that's during the day, 10:00 AM, okay? And then the next regular meeting is first Tuesday in December, which is December the 6th. Thank you, Sheila. Okay? So those are just my date reminders. And I have no other announcements, so I'll turn to Leo.
I'll update you on the tourism board, specifically meals and occupancy. Occupancy for the month of August, believe it or not, things are adjusting a little bit, are down 9%, but that was based on, last year, we had 158 million in occupancy collections. Current year-to-date, we're up 7.7%. And then the meals collection is, for August, is up 15%. Current year-to-date is 7.9%. However, when you start drilling down into the various groups we monitor, hotel occupation, all that, everybody except property management had declines. So it may be, well, I think a lot of this is, there's been price adjustments that's caused some of that increase, not volume. So that's all I got. And then the, as I said earlier, the grant committee did approve the town's request for the path. The general meeting, we approved it, so now it's, the Board of Commissioners will need to approve it. Normally, they approve what's being asked for. One other thing is mark your calendar for Friday, next Friday, the 11th. We'll be celebrating Veterans Day here at Southern Shores. We have the program, and everything is, as far as I know, is in place. Our mayor will be doing the welcome and pledge allegiance. We got Southern Shores couple doing the, David and Cindy Portman doing the National Anthem, God bless America at the end. The invocation is Dr. William, Reverend William Walsh from Holy Redeemer. Our presentations, it's interesting, of course, I'm one, and there's another one of my cohorts there, but we do have a former speaker, Captain Jim Groff, retired Navy captain. And then we also have Kathleen Morgan, who is a retired commander. And then on top of that, our speaker is a vice admiral. So the Navy is well represented in this. And our honor guard is going to be the Boy Scouts Troop 116, will be the honor guard, and they may bring some of the Cub Scouts with them. And our TAPS is being handled by a young man, I've not, I don't know him, I know Cliff does. His name's JP Kovacs, and he's with the First Flight High School Band. So it's a little different than we've done in the past, we've got a lot more community participation, which I was sort of looking for. So please mark it, please come to honor us, honor our veterans that basically made the ultimate sacrifice. That's all I got.
Looking forward to it. Mark?
I'll bet.
Okay. Paul?
I'm good.
Matt?
Election day is next Tuesday. Please vote, respect your poll worker.
Absolutely.
They're your friends, neighbors, and citizens.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of council business. So we need a motion to go, well, I'm going to take a break and then come back and do a motion to go to closed session? Okay, so we're going to call a five-minute recess. Thank you.